Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
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 I think it's like around one so it's always on.
I haven't seen you.
Because it's now we're going to.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
It looks like.
Yeah.
That's what he does.
That's one too.
They got one at the same time.
Practically like.
He's not credit.
So, yeah.
Look, like after he had the.
It was a.
Actually, he would look.
He's been.
Things.
How's it going?
I guess that we've reached two beds.
Not at all.
No, no.
I can notice.
I was like, did anything?
I don't want you to.
Yeah.
Make that help.
No, it's really exciting.
The boys.
I just kept doing that.
Yeah.
I'm.
You got this, Sam.
So.
It's.
Yeah.
Shit is this.
It's all right.
It's better than this.
Yeah. I can attest to that. I've gone to a lot of. Sometimes it's just full of enemies, you know? So it's nice to see people.
Joy being.
Right, yeah.
Joy being.
Yeah.
It's a reminder of the rest of the city.
Good point.
I'm gonna go to the side one back here.
We have some good people here.
Want to speak up something?
Right.
For my words.
And I told them.
It's a reflection of that.
They see that.
Right.
This is a good job.
We got a.
If I were here.
Yeah, you're right.
I start to dry.
Another one.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Stevens.
Sorry, you went with that.
Oh, no. She put.
We are a. Yeah, that's correct, I think.
Yep, she got here. Okay, good, okay.
So it's great. And then.
Good, you're on pretty good one here.
So, um, it's, um, the strand. And it just says, um, basically that. And I'm sure it's. Or not.
Well, to be honest with you, one time when I have him come up, I don't like to have the parents on these cases come up with me.
Inside.
So we'd love to have you and your husband come on up here as well. And then if you want to help, accept this to him as well.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You can either, or I'll tell you what, why don't you sit on this side? So we don't get mixed up with everything else.
And then we'll do it.
And then you can reach from that side and I'll be on this side.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We, uh, we're gonna start off with a whole series of presentations. Uh, so we'll go ahead and get started. The first one is for Eagle Scout Brayden, um, Corgel. Say, Craig. Brayden. And before we do the presentation, I'm gonna ask you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
If everybody could stand. I pledge allegiance to.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Brayden. And I would ask if his parents would like to, your parents would like to come up here and join you. Obtaining the, uh, rank of Eagle Scout is quite an accomplishment. Uh, Brayden is currently, there's a few facts about Brayden, is currently in EMT school at KCKCC and completed his fire science certification in high school while taking night classes at KCKCC as well. He has volunteered at the Leavenworth County District Number Two Fire Department since he was seventeen years old. He has recruited three people to join the department, his best friend and his brother Justin and sister Kristen, who are both on their way to become firefighters as well. He co-owns a mowing and landscape business with Justin, his brother, Corgel Brothers Mowing. This is their seventh season mowing and they just bought their third zero-turn mowerer as they wore the first one out already. So we have a proclamation for Brayden. Whereas for more than one hundred years, the Boy Scouts of America has been an organization of leaders who build character for youth. And whereas the top honor to youth, offer, top honor offered to youth is the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas to qualify for the honor, a young person spends countless hours learning about the world around them, successfully mastering many academic and physical skills and must complete a major service project which benefits their community. And whereas Brayden Corgel joined Scout Troop 451 to focus on backpacking and hiking. And whereas Brayden challenged himself to camp at least one night monthly outdoors, either in a tent or in the open air, Brayden accomplished that monthly goal over the five and a half years. And whereas Brayden earned fifty-seven merit badges, I think he's got them all on tonight, has earned fifty-seven merit badges during the time as a scout and attended summer camps in Georgia, Colorado, Kansas, Missouri, and Oklahoma. And whereas Brayden successfully completed the Eagle Scout Project redesigning and reconstructing the meeting room stage at the Bonner Springs United Methodist Church. And whereas Brayden successfully managed over one thousand hours of volunteering by at least twenty volunteers over six weekends and has, was found worthy and awarded the rank of Eagle Scout. And now therefore, I, Tom Stevens, mayor, do hereby proclaim April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, as Brayden Corgel Day in Bonner Springs. I congratulate Brayden, his family, and the leadership of the Boy Scout Troop on this achievement and urge other troop members to continue their progress on the Eagle Trail. Thank you. You just fought Chris. And, Tom, I think you've got something you'd like to present to him.
So his troop actually disbanded. His troop was in Shawnee, um, Troop 451, and it actually disbanded. And all of that, um, process, uh, um, after COVID, it was hard to keep members. And he, um, uh, continued on through COVID and managed to do the camping for five and a half years. I think he was in six and a half total, but, um, in the Boy Scouts. And then he was a Cub Scout before that, and he had perfect attendance at that point. So I thought, let's see. Um, the proclamation, um, got the idea from Matt Beetz, his mentor, um, for the project and as in church as well, um, and also in scouting. And then, um, Sharice Davids made sure that she, um, uh, saw to it that this flag was flown over the U.S. Capitol. And, um, what else did we do? Um, she sent a nice letter and a certificate for you. Um, and I am kinda getting some things coming in, um, as, um, time goes on a little bit because I didn't know about all of these things because the troop didn't do it for him. But we're trying to make up for it. Thanks, Tom.
Would you like to say anything, Brayden, at all? Okay. Thank you, Brayden.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Next up, Gloria. One of the enjoyable parts of serving is recognizing those employees that have given a lot of long dedicated years of service to our community. Um, would you like to say, introduce yourself, Gloria, real quick before I read your proclamation?
Yes, I would. Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Gloria Ochoa, and I started nineteen years ago. Rita Hoag, may she rest in peace, hired me as a TIBLO dispatcher. And then, uh, five years later, Jack Healan, the city manager at the time, said, could you go up to the senior center and work for us for three months? I said, no. And he said, we need you. So I went up there and then he asked me if I would take the permanent position. And I accepted after he told me I had one day to make my decision. So, and I've been there ever since. It's a good thing. I'm, uh, was happy to, uh, be with the seniors and they wel- welcomed me with open arms. And, um, I just want to thank them. And I would also like to address the council. Thank you for trusting in me and having me as your director. But I'd also like to say one more thing. I know you know the kind of people that work for you. Tom Stevens, he came out to see me one before I left. And his wife offered to take me to a doctor's appointment. That's the kind of people you have. Amber has, I just call her and say, Amber, I need to talk to you. She's there. When I needed a prayer, Tilly was there for me. She prayed for me. Justine, my boss and friend, when she knew I needed to go to doctor's appointments, all I heard was okey-dokey. You know, that means a lot for, okay, calm down. It means a lot, and it just shows what kind of people you have working for you. They care. Uh, Roger, I love you. Roger's always been there for me, him and Jan. This was a hard decision, but when you get to be a hundred, it's about time to let go. No, really. Um, thank you so much for letting me be a part of the city of Bonner Springs. And I'm enjoying my retirement. Wow. Don't know what to do with myself, but I'll find things. Thank you so, so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna read the proclamation now. Whereas Gloria Ochoa has worked for the city of Bonner Springs for nineteen years, first as TIBLO dispatcher, then as senior center director. And whereas during her time as a senior center director, Gloria impacted many lives with the time and energy she has given. And whereas Gloria worked diligently to coordinate countless events, such as volunteer programs and Bonner Springs Elementary, annual spaghetti dinners for scholarships, ice cream socials. Uh, she's hosted the city band concerts, wellness activities, parade, parade floats, and educational opportunities. And whereas she coordinated with Lenexa and Olathe over the years to make it possible for the seniors to participate in many trips and adventures. And whereas, under Gloria's leadership, the senior center participants raised funds for USD two oh four, Von Trent, Feed His Lambs, the National Breast Cancer Foundation, and Leavenworth Veterans Hospital, and more. And whereas Gloria has been an important part of the lives of many people through her compassion, service, and friendship. And now therefore, I, Tom Stevens, mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, as Gloria Ochoa Day in Bonner Springs and urge all citizens of Bonner Springs to thank Gloria for her many years of dedication to our community. Thank you, Gloria. Oh, you know I'm gonna do it. It's like just a picture.
Thank you so much.
You're gonna make me cry. Oh, Gloria. My apologies. We got, got a little bit reminiscent there. We also have a plaque, uh, from the city for her years of service here in Bonner Springs.
Thank you, Gloria. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, I'll ask the, uh, assuming the deputy chief going to, please come on up. Deputy Chief Jennings, he's gonna be given the recognition for a couple of fire cap, uh, fire certificates.
Thank you. If I could have Captain Mike Wim Jr. and Captain Bill Radcliffe come up here. One of the first priorities when I arrived at Bonner Springs was to help professionalize fire and EMS services. Uh, a key component of that that we were able to source was a program called the Fire Officer Apprenticeship Program, delivered through Hutch College, uh, which was a program that was sponsored through the Kansas Department of Economic Development. Uh, this was offered at almost no cost to the city, uh, and it involved, uh, not only formal coursework, uh, but hundreds of hours of on-the-job training, peer work groups, mentorship, and performance-based evaluations. The end result is stronger fire department leadership, not just on the ground during our tactical and, uh, strategic responses that we deal with, but also in the daily operations of a modern fire department. And in the end, this program is really about increasing the services that we can provide to our citizens of Bonner Springs. So tonight, I'd like to proudly recognize our two captains who completed this, uh, well, it turned out to be more than a year-long program. I have the, uh, diplomas completion, uh, certificates signed by Governor Laura Kelly from the state. Uh, so on behalf of, well, the city, uh, Chief Richards, and myself, I'd like to present you with these, uh, diplomas of completion. This one's yours. Congratulations, Bill. Thank you for all the effort. Same as well. Fantastic.
You wanna take a picture up here with him? Oh, you get up there too. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we have a proclamation for National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Do we have someone here to? Would you like to introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. I'm actually here, um, for one of my coworkers, so I have nothing prepared. Um, but my name is Carolyn Shiner. I am the program director for the Leavenworth Atchison Child Advocacy Center, which is a program of the First Judicial District CASA Association.
Thank you very much for being here this evening. Proclamation, whereas in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, seventy thousand nine hundred and forty reports were made to child protective services in the state of Kansas. And whereas child abuse and neglect are serious problems with, problems affecting every segment of our community. And finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of the state of Kansas. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, I, Tom Stevens, mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Bonner Springs and urge all citizens to recognize this monthly, uh, this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. And last, we have the, uh, the proclamation for Arbor Day. I know we've got a few members here that would like to come up and stand up front. You know, you can tell, you can come on this other side too, you know?
I don't know about that.
I'll let you get on this other side too. Oh, you. Okay. I like you, Betty. And who would be like to be your spokesman for tonight? Would you like to introduce yourself, talk just a little bit about?
Oh, well, my name's Betty Ream. Um, I've been part of the Bonner Beautiful Commission. Well, we've been at Tree Sealy for thirty-eight years, and they've been stuck with me for about thirty-six. Um, we have Karen Baxter with us, who's the vice chairperson of our group. We have Justine, who's the driving force for us from the city. We have Cecilia, um, who's the artistic person. And we have Ted down the end, one of our former mayors. So we have quite a motley crew here. And, uh, we would have liked to invite all of you to our Arbor Day program, which will be the twenty-fifth of April down at the Bonner Springs Elementary. And Operation Wildlife is gonna have their night owl program. Lots of kids, uh, would just really, really like this. So try to come if you can. Thank you.
I don't think we were stuck with you. You, uh, just planted some really good, strong roots. Oh, come on. A little bit of dad humor. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed when more than a million trees were planted in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating, and cooling costs, moderating the temperatures, clearing the, cleans, cleansing the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable and renewable resource, giving us paper, uh, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas since nineteen eighty-six, the city of Bonner Springs has painted, planted over two thousand trees along our streets, in our parks, in our cemetery, and on school grounds. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a so, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Tom Stevens, mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby recognize April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, as Arbor Day in the city of Bonner Springs. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and to plant trees for present and future generations.
Did you get him, Chris?
Thank you, Gloria. Oh, here. Okay, we will move on to the rest of the next part of the city council meeting, which is citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. Uh, this is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any matters. Uh, there will be no immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. Is there anyone who wishes to address the city council this evening on items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. I would go ahead, then we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting, claims for city operations, a public use request for a country stampede, a public use request for Makers Fair, public use request for Evenings on Oak, twenty twenty-five, the public use request for Bonner Springs Farmers Market, public use request for Bonner Blast, public use request for Block Party Bayless, and appointments to board and commissions in the library, specifically, the library. And I'll mention those names here just a second. Uh, my plan is to do this. My apologies. Uh, the two appointments were for Laura Santos and Katie Wim. Uh, they will be filling vacancies on the library board for a four-year term. Does the staff wish to pull anything from? Is anybody from the audience, the citizens, wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Council members?
Mister Mayor, I would like to pool and discuss item number six, public use request for the Bonner Springs Farmers Market. Um, and if I may have Captain Pate come up.
Well, not yet. We'll, we'll do, we'll, we'll pull it for right now.
Okay.
Uh, any other items that need to be pulled? Seeing none, then I would accept a motion for all items, uh, with the exception of item six.
Mister Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of number six.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mister Shannon, a second by Mister McMahon. Um, all those in favor? I'll have the clerk call roll, poll vote.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Wood? Oh, sorry. Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to consent item, uh, six, which was polled, is the public use request for the Bonner Springs Farmer Market. Uh, would the staff need to do any kind of presentation on this at all? Did they wish to?
We'll have Megan come up and give an overview.
Good evening. Uh, Megan Gilliland, Economic Development Manager. I believe that, um, there was some conversation today with a business owner in the one hundred block of Oak about parking in Centennial Park during the farmer's market. Um, but to that, I think that, uh, Captain Pate might be the better person to address that over me. Um, just so you know, I did the, uh, public use request the same as we did last year, so there aren't any changes necessarily to the setup from twenty twenty-four season. So I'll let, uh, Captain Pate take the mic.
Captain?
Good evening. My understanding is there was concerns regarding the parking behind the businesses in the one hundred block. Block of Oak, which would require traffic to flow through the closed part of that parking lot should the public use request be, I guess, accepted tonight. That would be the concern for the police department as far as allowing traffic to go through the closed part of the parking lot, as there's, it's a one-way thoroughfare with the pedestrian traffic that would be present for the farmer's market would be the traffic and safety concern we would have.
I talked to--
Hold on, we're not ready. Is there any more additional input from staff? If not, I would go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anybody from the public wishes to comment on this? Okay, I would go ahead and accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the public use request for the Bonner Springs Farmers Market.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Gurley and a second by Mr. Shannon. And we will go ahead and start here with you, Ms. Blanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with the owner of Kobe's, and he spoke on behalf for Red Fortune. I expressed those concerns to Captain Pate. We think we've come up with somewhat of a middle ground of solution of making sure that parking by Centennial in the alleyway remains open for either patrons of the market or patrons of the businesses on the 100 Block of Oak, to include an edit on the special use request map that will allow Red Fortune employees to park in their, like, lot area behind that fence. Captain Pate thinks that that won't be a problem to set up a barrier kind of curved that way to open up that parking. But I more so wanted this to be available to the public because there are questions of why the entire parking lot is closed off. And that is because specifically recommendation from our police department because of safety concerns of people walking around during market. So I think as long as we make that edit, I think some of those businesses will be a little happier. So thank you to Megan and Captain Pate for doing that on the special use request.
Cassandra, is there anything you'd like to comment on it?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mr. McMahon?
I don't have any questions.
Then real quickly, my test, they went and sat back down. You may have to come back up. I just want to find out, the current, the current plan that is on the agenda for tonight does not, does not, does not reflect those changes, correct?
So the map that I drew for the farmer's market use of Centennial Park, which is part of your packet, has, I specifically put traffic arrows this year so that you could kind of see how people could access Centennial. So the only areas that they block off is right at Cedar in the mid-block crossing kind of at the caboose. And then it's, to my knowledge, always been open for people to drive in and use those six or eight spots right next to Centennial Park. That's where we encourage people who are handicapped or disabled to be able to have quicker access there. But technically, anyone going to the farmer's market or a business in 100 Block could park there. We don't close those off. And then there's cones and a barrier that the farmer's market staff put out in a diagonal from the, there's like a triangular piece of concrete. We put those out to curb people trying to drive through into Centennial Park. So those six or eight spots right there are open and will be, continue to be available for farmer's market, 100 Block, whoever wants to use them. But I don't use Google Maps. I draw these out because I have to move barriers and everything all the time. So the answer is, is we'll make sure that this barricade here in the park allows for Red Fortune's staff to access their gravel parking lot.
Okay. Does the current, what's in front of the council tonight reflect that, or will we need to amend the, amend the--
I don't think you need to amend it. It's just more of an operational, we'll make sure that the farmer's market staff puts it back further. But it, it still shows that there's a barrier or a barricade in Centennial Park. And that's what you're really authorizing tonight is the use of Centennial Park for the farmer's market season.
Any other comments, questions for anyone? Seeing none, then--
I will make a comment really quick, not a question necessarily, but I do know that last year, when I was the market manager, we did allow accommodations for Red Fortune to come in at any time. It was always very easy for them to get in and out, as well as any of their delivery trucks when those came on a Saturday early enough. So those accommodations are always made. We also had another business owner, I don't know the, the address, but the block building right there, that requested we move the barricades back a little bit, and we did that as well. So I know that staff this year will also accommodate anything that comes. So thank you for your diligence with working with this.
And then are you, have you spoken to the new director for, so you can kind of relay some of this, some of the past experiences?
Yeah, and I'm still a volunteer, so.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, then I would go ahead and have the clerk record the vote.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to new business. The next two items are connected. We're first going to have a public hearing to amend the Westgate TIF district, and then we will follow it with item number two, which is the ordinance to extend the Westgate TIF boundary. So I would go ahead and accept a motion to open a public hearing at 8:04 PM.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to open the public hearing at 8:04 PM.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Long. We'll go ahead and, staff presentation, oh, I'll tell you what, before we do that, is there any, is there any ex parte communication, since this is a public hearing, or any other disclosures that need to be given?
No.
Seeing none? Mr. Ellsworth?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tyler Ellsworth with Q-TAC Rock, the city's bond counsel. For this public hearing this evening, I understand that the theme park developers team has a presentation that they'd like to make. But before they make that presentation, I just wanted to provide just a little bit of background. So the hearing this evening and the ordinance that follows it on the agenda relate to expanding an existing tax increment financing district. In 2017, there was a prior development project proposed on a park of the theme park site. And in early 2017, council established a TIF district for, I think it was 80 acres in the far northeast corner of what's now potentially the theme park project. So the item that you're being asked to consider this evening is an expansion of that TIF district that was previously created. So this is really a procedural step. There isn't really any direct impact on the city, on your taxpayers, on the property owners in the district. This is something that is part of the process of putting these incentives in place for the theme park development to move forward. So nothing really that's super consequential this evening. This is really part of the process. So the other item I wanted to mention is that staff received a letter of support from the wine dot EDC in favor of expanding this TIF district. So wanted to mention that as well.
Okay, you said the applicant wishes to do a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Mark Abbott with Pulse and Ellie, counsel for the developer. Glenn Bilbo is in the audience tonight if there are any additional questions. Starting off, just to parrot kind of the procedural nature of tonight's ordinance that it will be up for consideration. Some of the incentives have to create a district, and then there is a project plan that is created, or that is approved. So creation of the district grants no rights to the developer. It just sets the stage for the next step where the actual project plan would be approved. There is also a overall development agreement, master development agreement, where all of the obligations for the developer, for the city, the rights, where the entire thing would be set forth on paper. That is being negotiated currently, but we're not at that point yet. We are just at the point of, of some of the various incentives. The Starbond District was created last year. This is the same type of item up for consideration tonight for the tax increment financing incentive, expanding the district to match the boundaries of the Starbond District that was already created. So if we could move on to the next slide, please. It is hard to see, but in the southwest corner there, there's an area outlined in blue. That is the existing TIF district. And what we are requesting is that the red areas, that the project, the overall project will be located on, that the areas in red be added to the existing TIF district. Next slide, please. So kind of some of this may, may have slipped from memory, so I would like to go through the overall project again to share with you both the scope of the entire project and some of the specifics for the various components. The, the, Mr. Bilbo has been working furiously to get all of the arrangements in place. There will be separate hotel developers, there will be an amusement park, there will be a rainforest attraction, and I'll go into, we have some depictions of some of those. But there'll be a number of retail shops, restaurants. All of that takes an inordinate amount of communication to get all of those individual operators on board. So the Starbond District that was created a year ago, there is a tremendous amount of work that is going on in the background. So I'd just like to share that piece with you. So these are the main components that are part of the overall project, the overall TIF project. There will be, in the development agreement, there will be a budget that will show of the entire project, by statute, certain incentives can pay for certain things. You cannot, it's not just an open, an open book, an open checkbook. So the TIF project is described as this project that's on the screen right now. The budget that is in the master development agreement that will be brought before you in the future will identify what costs are eligible for TIF reimbursement, what costs are eligible for Starbond reimbursement, what costs are eligible for CID reimbursement. And again, there will be a number of individual consideration, items that are up for consideration to approve all of those various incentives. But tonight, all we're doing is, can we please expand the TIF district to match the existing Starbond District? So the main component that will be the, the highlight of this, of this project is the Mattel amusement park. There'll be some depictions here on the next slide or two of all the various Barbie, He-Man, and all the other types of items that you can expect to see there. There will be a hotel and convention center. There'll be a mixed-use space of retail and restaurants. There'll be some office space, too. A second hotel. There'll be an area that we anticipate being known as the Village that is going to be a holiday-themed attraction. It will be year-round. There will be a seasonal ice rink. But again, other ways to bring people to the project 12 months out of the year. There'll be a third hotel. There will be an RV resort. And then the indoor rainforest attraction that I referenced earlier with, you know, live nature exhibits, again, in a restaurant and a retail store in that component. Next slide, please. So here's an example of, well, not an example. These are the, the Mattel branded names, and the developer has a license agreement already in place authorizing use of these brands from Mattel. There is, we'll follow up on the next slide, an existing facility of Mattel Theme Park with an associated amphitheater and hotel going on in the Phoenix, Arizona metro. And we will have some depictions of what this will look like in real life here in a page or two. But these brands are going to be, they're both at Glendale, and they will be here in Bonner Springs also. So the top picture is the existing, shows construction status of the project in Glendale, Arizona. The amusement park is almost, it's well on its way to being substantially complete. The hotel and amphitheater that was originally slated to have construction contemporaneous with the amusement park. The scope of both the convention, pardon me, the amphitheater and the hotel increased significantly. So the construction timeline increased for the hotel. The hotel increased from approximately 600 rooms to 11 or 1,200 new beds, or total beds. So the size and scope of kind of other components in Glendale increased significantly. But that, as you can see, the amusement park, well, as you can kind of see, you can see the roller coasters with the yellow, the yellow trusses and structures, is well on its way to completion. And then the rest of the, the project is well underway also. So the planned components in, in Glendale include two roller coasters, Thomas, Thomas and Friends, that some of you with, with kids may be familiar with. There's a Barbie Beach House, He-Man with Masters of the Universe, and then also a mini golf experience that just adds more attractions and ways to attract visitors to the area. And the next couple of slides are primarily depictions of, well, I should say renderings of what the finished product in Glendale will, will resemble. So there is the, kind of the main entrance with the theme park, with the roller coasters. The next page shows kind of a more aerial view of how the site is laid out. The next page, again, being Thomas and Friends. So they have attractions that are geared towards young kids, older kids, a variety of ages. The rainforest attraction, the next two slides are regarding the rainforest attraction. This will have live animals inside, birds that are kind of free-range, that will be in a natural, natural environment, all indoors. So again, available for use 12 months out of the year. Some additional renderings of the, kind of the different components within the rainforest And then the last page covers the preliminary budget. When we came to you last, last year for the Starbond District creation, the budget, I believe, was 400 and, maybe approximately 460 million, due to both getting more current and updated estimates on existing costs, and also what all components are going to be present, are going to be added. The current budget is right around $540 million for the entirety of the development. So I'm happy to answer any questions regarding, if this is the appropriate time, regarding the actual planned district. But again, tonight, the developer gets no, no rights, creates no obligations on behalf of the city. It's just respectfully requesting to match up the TIF district with the Starbond District boundaries.
Thank you for the presentation. Is there any resident that would wish to comment on this, speak on it? Seeing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public meeting, public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the public meeting at 8:17 PM.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Blanks. We'll ask the clerk to call for the vote.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Wood? Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now I would accept a motion on the ordinance to extend the Westgate TIF boundary.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to modify the original Westgate TIF district to expand the property boundaries.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Blanks. And we'll start right here with you, Mr. McMahon. This would be a good time now to ask any of those questions or comments.
Thank you. You started in Glendale already, the development, right? The park that you're wanting to build here is almost a reflection of what you're doing in Glendale currently, to some degree.
To a, to a very large degree, the concepts will be the same. And Glendale is the, the, kind of the Mattel piece of Glendale is very close to completion. The surrounding pieces of, there's an 1,100-plus-room hotel and an outdoor amphitheater. The scope of those two components increased. So those two are, are not as far along. But the Mattel piece in Glendale is very close to substantial completion.
That's great. And given the footprint now with the additional areas, this gives you adequate space to do what you envision?
It does, yes.
Excellent. Have there been any feedback necessarily from any residents or anyone that lives in those areas? Not that this is, not putting you on the spot by any means. Other than when we initially rode this out.
When initially came forward, I think there was a few, but.
Right, wanted to kind of keep the small-town feeling and all that stuff.
But I haven't really heard too many others than that.
Excellent. I see a golf course that's kind of you're going to nudge up against, which is fine. Kind of scenic for the most part when they're, whatever holes those are. That was good, right? Just a last thought. So when, when do you think you could potentially start breaking ground at some point? Just guessing.
I can say that there is a significant amount of work. The development agreement is kind of the linchpin of, once the development agreement is negotiated, then we know what, layman's terms, we know what we're getting, the city knows what you're getting, the city knows what we're required to do, and we know what the city is required to do.
And there's a lot to happen between now and then.
We're actually very close. There've been a number of rounds and probably only a couple of remaining material terms to get through. I am confident that we will find a way through those. Once the development agreement is approved, there is unfortunate or unfortunate. Each of the incentives, Starbonds, TIF, CID, the, there's IRBs also that are a part of the, the overall, overall picture. They all have statutory approvals that are required. They all have notice. You have to go through this waiting period of publication, mailing. So we will calendar that. Once we have, and the city staff is comfortable, that we have the development agreement in place where we can start calendaring all these events. We have a draft calendar. Some of the, some of the timing that we originally anticipated didn't go as quickly. So we have the draft calendar already, we just need to populate it with new dates. Once that happens, once all the incentives are approved, there is then the step of, well, all these incentives come with the request, and this is still an issue. So I'm not meaning to impose, but they all come with the request to issue bonds. And again, there is a significant conversation to go with, with all of that. But the request to issue bonds, so it's not just approving the development agreement, it's not just approving all the, all the various incentives. It's then having bonds sold at a public sale. So there is money that we can use to fund construction. And the development agreement will set out of the entirety of the $540 million, what portion are we requesting and in the development agreement would be, would, we have the, the right to do so. What portion of the $540 million is paid with Starbonds? What portion is paid with TIF or TIF bonds? What portion is paid with CID or CID bonds? So that's a description of what needs to happen. I wish I could give you a date, but once the calendar of approvals are occurred and then the development agreement is executed and then the bonds are sold, there will be deadlines by which the developer has to commence construction. It will not be at the developer's, you know. There will be obligations upon us on when we have to start construction.
Sure. One other question, this is interesting. So when this, at the genesis of this information coming out sometime back, there was a buzz.
Yep.
Right, about this development.
Yep.
I'm curious, as big as the United States is, that Bonner Springs was selected. Can you give me, what, what brought Bonner, right, into the discussion? Is there the development components, opportunities? Who knows what stadiums may be in the area one of these days? What, just what?
Sure. I can give my piece, Glenn, if you would like to add, feel free to jump up and cut me off. But a lot of it comes down to, with the placement of these types of attraction projects, there's a certain, to be frank, some of it comes down to incentives. That different locations have different, different states have different incentives that they are able to offer to different projects. Look at the Chiefs. Starbonds legislation was created, or legislation was changed so that there was a package that could attract the Chiefs to cross the state line. That's how some of these projects are located. Now regardless of what incentives are available, the, the population, the, the statistics, the visitation, it's already coming, the project has to work. There has to be an underlying expectation that the project's going to work from the beginning. So that is what attracted this project to this area. So Bonner Springs had the, in the Kansas City MSA, the level of visitation and the level of population was already here. The proximity to other major cities in the region. The, the, the MSA itself was an attraction, or was an attractive location for this type of project. It is an attractive location for this type of project. And then, how do you get it built? That's where the incentive piece comes in of different states around the US offer their, they, they have different things that they can offer.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Anything else? Ms. Gurley?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Branca? Ms. Blanks?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation. And that, yes, I, to kind of pony up to, pony on what Representative Postenelli said, the Attorney Postenelli said is that there's still a lot of steps that have to be accomplished before they can ever put a, put a shovel on the ground. I know the, we've kind of been working towards a developer's agreement. I remain optimistic that we'll have something hopefully in front of the council, maybe in the next meeting or two. And that'll be the big piece, and then we can really start moving forward. So all we're doing tonight is just kind of quantifying an area that says, we as a council will be allowed to, to basically create a, you know, bond, TIF bonding in that area. So we're allowing them to be able to utilize TIF funding in that area. So if there's no other comments, questions, we'd go ahead and ask the clerk to record the vote.
Voting on a motion to adopt an ordinance to modify the original Westgate TIF district to expand the property boundaries. Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for this evening. On to item number three, resolution to amend the development agreement for the Sandstone Reinvestment Housing Incentive District. Mr. Ellsworth again.
All right. Good evening again, mayor and council. So we're shifting gears now, and we're talking about the Sandstone Townhome Project and the Sandstone Townhome RHID that was put in place a couple of years ago. I think it was the fall of 2022. And the developer of the Townhome Project has been working diligently, but they have had difficulty getting permanent electric to the site. And that has delayed them considerably. So under the original development agreement that was approved in 2022, they were to be done with construction entirely at the end of 2024. The delay in getting permanent electric service basically pushed all their dates and they weren't able to meet that deadline. They reached out to staff well in advance of that deadline and said, hey, could we get some grace here? This really isn't our doing. Can we get an amendment to this development agreement to extend our completion deadline? Because the electric service still isn't here. Staff said, yeah, we have no problem supporting that. That seems like a reasonable request. It's clear that you guys have been after this diligently, notwithstanding these difficulties that you've had. So tonight, we have a resolution approving an amended and restated development agreement. And really, the only change is to bump the original completion date out from December 31st of '24 to December 31st of '26. And that's essentially it.
Mr. Ellsworth, is there any citizens who wish to comment on this? Seeing none, I would go ahead and accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the amended and restated development agreement for the Sandstone RHID.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Blanks and a second by Ms. Long. We'll start down there with you, Mr. Shannon. Any comments, questions?
No question.
No questions.
Nothing from me.
No questions.
No questions.
I'm just glad to see that they are making progress. I go up by there every so often, and it's good to see there's actually residents. I did notice one thing is that it did talk about, are they not going to sell any individual units anymore? Because I noticed that was pulled from it as well.
That's correct. Part of the, part of the request from the developer last fall, in addition to extending the completion date, was to allow them the ability to sell buildings or individual units to owner occupants. And they've since withdrawn that request. I think it sounds like they're going to.
Completely rental.
It will still be all rental, and so we've removed that from the agreement, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, I would go ahead and have the clerk record the vote.
Voting on a motion to adopt a resolution approving the amended and restated development agreement for the Sandstone RHID. Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number four, Waste Management Contract. Does the staff wish to make any presentation? If you, we had, for the public's knowledge, we did have a workshop on this item and covered a lot of the details. If you'd like to give just a real quick, you know, one-minute, two-minute overview and what's in front of us.
Sure. Again, this evening, looking for approval to move forward with the resolution of a contract for waste management to provide carted trash services within the city. Again, using carts opposed to the uncarted service that's out there today. Is that quick enough?
Excuse me, mayor?
Yes, please.
When a council member makes a motion, they need to select either option A, which is the weekly collection of trash and recycling, or option B, which is weekly trash and every other week recycling, please.
Is there anybody from the public wishes to comment on this? Okay, I will ask for a motion, and just as the city clerk did point out, is that we do have two potential possibilities in front of us. Option A would include, for the public's knowledge, option A would include weekly pickup of recycling. Option B would be every other week recycling. So with that, I would go ahead and accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign and execute a contract, option B, for residential solid waste collection and waste management.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shannon, a second by Ms. Gurley. And we'll start down with you, Ms. Long.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Ms. Blanks?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Mr. McMahon?
The, the question that was presented that you brought up, we're voting, we're not voting A or B. We're just approving it and then we'll decide which one we're going to go with?
The motion was on the floor was for option B.
Nope.
We're not voting yet on it, but do you have any comments?
No, no comments. I guess everybody knows where I'm at now.
Ms. Gurley?
No additional comments other than for the public's information, if they weren't here for the workshop. Option A would be weekly recycling, weekly trash with a slight increase to the monthly fee, $3.10. Option B is weekly trash, every other week recycling at the same rate that we're paying now.
So there's $3 difference. Versus weekly and bi-weekly for recycle.
There's also larger recycle bins.
Larger, yes, larger collection bins.
Yeah, all the, either, either option will have the same.
Trash is every week, it's recycle this every other week. There's only a $3 difference between every week and every other week.
Correct. And most households will be going from this, all households will be going from this square. What did you tell me?
24 gallons.
24 gallons.
To a 96 gallon.
To a 96 gallon cart.
Which should be able to facilitate, unless your mayor talks.
All of a sudden, I just drew a blank.
Sorry, Roger.
Oh. I appreciated what you said, this comment, but letting us know that we start with the bigger ones, we can, after so much time, we can go to the, to the smaller ones. That would give everybody an opportunity to say, you know, I, my 96 is way too big. In the mayor's case, he's going to need two of them. So anyway, but, so. Yes.
Yeah, to mention to what Mr. Shannon was saying is that after about 90 days, if people wanted to downsize their carts to something that's a little bit more, they feel like the 95 is, or 96 is not manageable enough for them. They could downsize and they do it free of charge once. But if you want to switch back and forth, back and forth, it's going to start costing you every time you do that. So I think people need to be aware that if you decide to switch carts, it's a one-time freebie. Yes, I'm actually very much of a pro, and I've mentioned that to several earlier, that a proponent of doing the weekly recycling, I think for $3 more. I know my household, we, we do a very good job of really being diligent about our recycling. And I would probably fill that container up and more in a week and a, in a week and a half time, let alone two weeks. The, so I would be actually more in favor of going the $3 route myself. Also, if there are households that are recycling, but maybe aren't filling it up, once you start realizing that you have 96 gallons for waste, you may all of a sudden start thinking, I, I keep overflowing that barrel. I'm going to have to start buying stickers for additional bags. Maybe I need to start recycling more. And the next thing you know, you're filling up the recycle bin. So I would buy, either we start, we can either start with every other week and then look at some point in time, because we would be allowed to, with, with advanced nose, be able to switch to every week, which would then increase the amount of the contract. But I think that's something that really needs to be considered.
Mr. Mayor, too, if I may, and I, this is a thought, you know, when it was mentioned, the additional $3 and some odd cents a month, I mean, a month, you're talking 30 some odd dollars, 37.40 or 37.20 a year. And with our families and everything, this is, this is something that would be, you know, beneficial to them. And as you, as was pointed out, how many of those little green barrels, you know, would go into 96? I'd love to see your trash. Anyway.
The counterargument to that would be that if someone is filling up their 96-gallon cart, so they end up having to buy stickers or go ahead and request a second barrel to start doing trash, they're going to end up paying even more than that $3.
Right, but how many? But anyway.
But that'd be the other side of the argument, so.
Did we ask you, do you have an insider opinion on that of places that are either doing every week or every other week or that have flip-flopped of, just to give us some reality of how, how often people are. Of just to give us some reality of how, how often people are or aren't filling these up?
Sure. Everybody's talking about the, the, you're thinking of the right equation. The question is, for the cheaper price of every other week recycling, will the majority of your residents, will that work? We already know there's going to be some outliers, right? Those outliers, to the mayor's point, will be paying actually more if they have to get a second container. Right? So will the majority of your residents function with every other week? Because there will be a small amount that won't, and yeah, they'll have to buy that or rent that second container. Or the question is, is that outlier number large enough to where it just makes sense to not have them have to rent additional containers? It's better just to go with weekly. So that's, that's your hall's job, right? You have to decide of all of the residents, you know, where does that needle lie? Is it most or some or little? To your question specifically, I have never had a community that started with every other week recycling and, and went to weekly. That, that has worked with, again, maybe a small outlying number that had to get additional containers. We've never really seen anyone go from every other week recycling to weekly from a municipal standpoint. Now, we have open market residents, and by that term, I just simply mean somebody that lives in a city that they don't contract their trash. They're free to use whatever customer they possibly want. And you'll see a little bit happen there, where some people will start on one service and go to the other. But the majority of it is, they start with weekly and they go to every other week. It rarely goes the other direction.
So every other week has been successful with not many complaints or people feeling like they're running out of space?
Nope. We, we have, um, that option for all of our open market customers all throughout Johnson County.
Thank you.
While you're there at the microphone?
Yeah.
Just real quickly, you said that you have a lot of them that start weekly, but then actually switch to the every other week. Is that correct?
Correct. From, from our open market standpoint, yes. It, it rarely goes the other way. Normally people realize it's not full, and they could save a couple of bucks, and so they go that direction.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Am I able to add something?
Yes, please.
He mentioned during the workshop, and I don't know if you want to talk about it anymore, but there those that have current trash carts, not waste management ones, did you mention that if they wanted to use one of those as a recycling container, they could do that?
Yes, right. So I think we, that came up briefly. We were talking about if you currently have a trash cart that you bought at Home Depot or something like that. When we move to the carted system, we will give you a trash and recycling cart. Now, it doesn't work for trash, because there's a cost to us putting trash in the landfill. So your rate includes, you know, one trash cart. And if you want to rent another trash cart, that's fine, but there's cost behind that. If you have a, if you want to transition one of your current carts that you currently have, that's a store-bought cart, personal container, and you want to make that your second recycling container, we'll collect that. Because we, we don't want to necessarily charge you more for recycling, because we actually want the recycling. Now, if you rent a cart from us, yes, there's a cost. But if you convert one of your current containers into a secondary recycling cart, that's fine with us. The only problem with those, and I'll just be upfront, is we have no idea what kind of cart you have. So it may work in those, that arm. It may get crushed. It may fall in the container. I mean, it's, I don't know what kind of carts, you know, or, or containers that people have.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, I, I think that is important to understand that if we do every other week, and if there is somebody who is a heavy user, they could utilize a second cart themselves, if they go out and purchase, and for recycling. And it would, then they could have that picked. The only inconvenience, of course, would be finding a location to store a, a second.
Yeah.
A second cart, but.
If somebody doesn't have a secondary cart and they want to go out and buy one, we would strongly recommend that they would just rent one from us. Because again, if you buy that container, and two weeks into it, it goes into the truck. And there's not a lot that's going to be reimbursed as far as that is concerned. Yeah, right.
It's trash.
It is trash. So just before somebody runs to Home Depot and spends, you know, sixty bucks on a cart, it's just something to consider. But we would prefer the carts that work with our.
If you don't already have one, if you have to go out and get one.
Correct, correct.
Any comments?
Now, on that same topic, is that, I just want to make sure it's something we could include in the educational information, is how to mark those if they are a secondary market receptacle to be used for recycling? How would the residents mark those to make them obvious?
Yeah, I mean, just put a sign on it, right? I mean, some kind of sticker or decal or something.
Be sure and tell people.
Right.
In our education process.
I think, just, just a quick thought. We still have people that forget what day their trash is supposed to be picked up. Right? And, and, and then we, so we're going to add another layer where, hey, this week you don't put out your recycle. You do it next week. And they're still struggling to figure out which day they're going to put their trash out. I just think that adds another layer of complexity for some people in our community. Hey, and it's no knock on them, right? Maybe they're busy, right? And trash is not always on their mind. I, I, I like simplicity. And for $3 more, I, I like the simplicity.
Um, we will provide a calendar. Uh, you, you've got a good point. Uh, one of the, the thing that even works better than the calendar is just tell the people to look up and down the street.
Hmm.
Because most of their neighbors.
When you're driving to work.
When you purchase out, look at everybody else's.
Somebody's in charge of hanging out the green, blue flag.
Welcome to Bonner.
I do appreciate that question that you asked, uh, Ms. Blanks, because the fact that, uh, people that do go and start with weekly end up a lot of times switching to the every other week. And those who are every other, start with every other week, very seldom ever switch to weekly.
Really, no. I mean, I'm, I, I can't say never, but it, it's rare.
It's rare.
Right.
So that kind of changes my, my mindset a little bit on that.
Cause I was more in favor of option A until you pointed that out.
Cause a lot of people, you know, they're living on budgets, and, you know, if you look at your recycle container a couple of times, and it's not full, and you realize I can save a couple bucks by doing something.
Any other comments? Any other questions? Seeing none, then I would ask the clerk to record the vote.
Voting on the motion to authorize the city manager to sign and execute a contract, option B, for residential solid waste collection with waste management. Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
No.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I know Mr. Mac Mahan was trying to put me in a position of having to put a, put out a tiebreaker there, but, uh, fortunately I was saved. On with item number five. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Option number five, our item number five, purchase of a 2026 Freightliner Dump Truck. Staff?
Good evening, this is Mayor Council. Matt Beats, Public Works Director. Uh, this is the first of two items tonight for none of you to replace a 2014 dump truck that Public Works uses. Um, this, uh, item is actually to purchase the chassis, the cab, the motor, that part of the truck. The second part is actually the outfitting, the bed, the lights, the plow, equipment. This is a Freightliner Dump Truck, similar to what we've been purchasing recently, and the existing dump truck we have now, we were initially planning on taking it and doing a trade-in on it. However, the offer that they gave us for it, uh, staff didn't feel it was, it was worth more than that. So we're going to put in, in purple wave with, uh, the city clerk, so. I don't know. This is a budgeted item that we had this year, so.
Is there anybody from the public wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, I would go ahead and accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2026 Freightliner 108 SD plus cab and chassis from Premier Truck Group of Kansas City in the amount of $118,791.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gerly, a second by Ms. Long. Okay, we will start here with you, Ms. Blanks.
No questions. Thanks, Matt.
Ms. Long?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mac Mahan?
Will this push off the, postpone the purchase of the Ariel Bucket Truck with the funds transfer, or that was, did we do that one last month?
You've already done that one.
And that was the one that came in under budget?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No questions.
No questions. Thanks, Matt.
And I have no additional questions to offer either, so if there's nothing else, I would go ahead now and accept, or go ahead and have the clerk, uh, call the vote.
Voting on a motion to approve the purchase of the 2026 Freightliner 108 SD plus cab and chassis from Premier Truck Group of Kansas City in the amount of $118,791. Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to item number six, 2026 Dump Truck Outfitting Package. Staff?
So this is the second part of this. Uh, this is the outfitting of it, the bed, the plow attachments, the uh, emergency lighting. Um, this bed is slightly different than the other beds we have. I wanted to bring up, um, this has removable panels in the bottom of the bed that we can take out. There's a like an auger system underneath of them. That's what, uh, in the wintertime when we're plowing with this truck, instead of having a slide-in, uh, spreader that we have now, this one actually utilizes the bed of the truck as it. And then there's a little spreader box that attaches to the back of it. Be the first one that we've had like this. Uh, we did talk with several cities around, and they've all been pretty positive with them. They said the staff initially didn't think they were going to like them, and that's all they order now, so. And then that also helps with, you know, keeping the weight of the truck a little lower to the ground instead of having such a high bed up, or with that spreader in the back, so. Yeah, anyways, this is, uh, through American Equipment, who, who does all of our outfitting for all of our, our, our fleets, and that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Beats. Anybody from citizens wish to, uh, speak on this item?